Good afternoon. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the Board of Trustees for the San Angelo Independent School District, and I'd like to welcome all of you here for our regular meeting of April 2022 of our school board. And I want to tell you that we're a little sorry that we're starting late, but we had a student showcase similar to will have a lot of recognitions here in a few minutes. But several of our students from both Central High School and Lakeview did some performances for us, starting at 5:00, and they were outstanding. I wish we could have put them all in here and everybody been able to see them. As you know, because many of you are parents of our students, and many of them are going to be recognizing in a few minutes, we have very, very many outstanding students in our schools, and we're very proud of them. I think the board will tell you this, the next, last month, this month, next month, are some of our months that we really enjoy our meetings because we get to meet so many of the students and recognize them, and then, of course, we have our graduations. So, anyway, I appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here. I have a script that I'm required to read at each meeting, and so let me read that, and then we'll get on with our meeting. As I mentioned to you, as president of the Board of Trustees, I welcome you all here, not just those who are, we have a house full here, and our hallways are filled up also, but I want to welcome those also watching the recording of this meeting online on our public access channel, Southern Lake Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that we will be discussing at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop last week. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approved budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public, but not a meeting of the public. With that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wish to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make an opportunity that we give everyone, that I'll make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes as to any agenda item, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make any comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. Also, I want to make you aware that if you do speak on something that is not on our agenda, we cannot reply to you under Texas law, except to just thank you for your comments because that item has not been posted. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. Also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones at this time. It is my pleasure to welcome you again to our tonight's meeting, and to thank you for taking time to join us. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. All right, I've called the meeting to order. We have a quorum of our board team. Mr. Lehman is out of the country right now. He was here last week, and he'll be back next month. At this time, I'm going to ask pastors from Redeemer San Angelo Church, Brian Carroll, Ryan Owens, one or the other of them is going to come up and give our invocation tonight. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to lead the invocation this evening. I'm a Central High School graduate of 2007, so it's a great honor to pray for this district that shaped me for so many years. Would you please join me in prayer? Holy Father, we are grateful to you for the many blessings that you give us in this life. We are grateful for this day. God, we are grateful to you for the blessing of education. Would you please give us the strength and the wisdom to steward this gift responsibly? Father, we are grateful to you for our leadership over this school district. Would you give them wisdom and strength as they face each challenge with boldness and integrity? Holy Father, would you help us as a community support the parents in San Angelo? Thank you for their leadership of their households and their children. Would you please give them the gift of love? Give them the gift of being present with their families. God, thank you for our youth, our children of our city. Would you give us wisdom and grace to steward this opportunity to lead them well? And God, we thank you for the city of San Angelo. We thank you for the schools. We thank you for the teachers. And we thank you for all the support staff and faculty that goes into each and every day of our kids' learning. Grateful to you for the gifts that you give us. We acknowledge your sovereignty and your will over our lives. We say these things in the name of Jesus and His power and authority. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, I'm going to call up the Sanderson family, is what it seems like. All four Sandersons attend Bel Air Elementary, and they're going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. I'm going to call up Caitlin Sanderson, Arrow Sanderson, Kyra Sanderson, and Karis Sanderson. And would you all please stand? Girls?
There you go. There you are.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, and one unity in the world.
The parents, you can come up and take your photos. The parents, you can come up and take your photos. Yeah, I'm going up there. There you go. What a great photo. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our director of athletics for San Angelo Independent School District, Rodney Chant, as we'll start some recognitions of some of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Dr. Death Law, Board of Trustees. It's the spring. We're extremely busy, and we've had a lot of success so far. And first off, I'd like to bring up Coach Abalas with the central tennis team to recognize his team in advancing this year, so come on up.
I promise they're making their way in. We are a herd of cattle out there. They're going to come through. We didn't have all our fancy, like, team shirts. We had a variety, and so we just said, hey, look nice, and bet you can't guess which sophomore boys are my sophomore boys. But, you know, they're funny, and they're good-looking, I guess. Real quick, I'm just going to, three minutes or less, I got it. Normally, I'll speak for 30 minutes. But first off, I want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to the admin. Thank you to the community and the parents. Like I always say, it takes a village, and it really does. We have all the places in town, the venues that help out with us, and lessons, and all that good stuff, and we just can't do it without everybody working together. You know, we have nice facilities, and they take care of us, and Mr. Waters takes care of us, our principals, they get us whatever we need when we need it, and so we're really appreciative of that. So these were our top eight players from the boys and girls side that participated in the district tournament. Now, we had a player place in every tournament this year, so I think that says a lot, and that was really good for us, and that helped us going in, into district. We had one fourth place at district. We had three third places at district, so they were alternates to the regional tournament, and we had one first place. Our girls' doubles was first place at the district tournament. So I would like Trinity Fluger and Kinsey King to step forward real quick. They were our regional qualifiers. They went to the regional tournament. They went to the regional tournament this past week in Arlington, and they won their first round against Arlington Lamar High School. And then we ran into the number-one seed, South Lake Carroll, and we came up a little bit short, but those girls ended up going all the way to the finals, and they won the finals. So they are the regional champions, and they'll be going to state. So we held our own, and we did well, and it was a great year, and we look forward to building on that. And one real thing, too, I also got to thank Coach Creek. Coach Creek is my psychiatrist shrink, right-hand man. So, you know, we couldn't do it without everybody, and especially Coach Creek. So thank you all very much, and have a good night.
Yeah, Coach, before they break away, we want them to circle around, but I also want you to call out every name, so that any parent, grandparent, anybody that might be watching this on Channel 4, that me and the audience will hear their name called out.
Yes, sir.
And wave when you hear your name, too. That'd be great, so we know what's...
Yeah, we were going to do a little group photo, and then he'll call your name as you walk around. Is that okay? Does that work?
That'll work, yeah. You tell me, boss.
Way to go, it's hard.
Ladies first. We'll start with Trinity Fluger. We're going to go Ann White, Jenna Vincent, Carissa Castillo, Carly King, Kinsey King, Olivia Henderson, Andre Carrasco, Davis Calhoun, Nate James, Sam Campasi, Mr. Carter Lyles, Brent Wilcox, and Gabe James. That's kind of nerve-wracking. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Creek. Next up, we have the Lady Cats soccer team and head coach Benjamin Henry.
I kind of brought a small army with me today. We'll get in here sooner or later. That was good. All right. Okay, well, first of all, thanks so much for having us. We really appreciate it and all the support as well. These girls had 16 wins this year, four losses, and two ties. They were the undefeated district 268 champions, by-district champions. This is their 15th straight appearance in the playoffs. They did a fantastic job. I'm going to start with my seniors. Well, Coach Andrews, of course, is right over there. She's leading the charge. I want to thank her. She's fantastic with the kids. We'll start with the seniors. I have a big group. There's 14 players, and I have a manager also that's a senior, so 15 total. Gwen Lucas is the manager. Step on up, and every time I just, yeah, there you go. Skip a wave. Kinsey Griffith, Jasmine Gonzalez, Caitlin Freeman, Claudia Mahrez, Bree Garcia, Riley Herbert, Clarissa Rueda, Addie Harkel Road, and she was our district goalkeeper of the year. Sophia Mater-Safont was first-team All-District this year. Jules Mesa was an honorable mention this year. Abby Combach was our district MVP this year. Camille Holly was first-team All-District this year. Ellie Barker was second-team All-District this year. Ivana Barajas was first-team All-District this year as well. Those are my seniors. My juniors, Sidney Herbert, Aubrey Gonzalez, Cami Perez, Lexi Templin, who was second-team All-District, Marissa Adelano, who was second-team All-District. Fans in the back. My sophomores, there's two of them, Alyssa Villarreal was first-team All-District, Ava Ibarra was second-team All-District, and then I had three fishies who are standing in front of me chuckling. Journey Jones, Emily Sikora, who was an honorable mention this year, and Carly Martinez, who was the district 268 newcomer of the year this year. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Hope to see you all next year.
First. Okay. Good luck.
One, two, three. It's going to be really tough. Ladies. Fair is headed between the bodies.
It's impressive. Way to go. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you, Coach Henry.
Next up, I'd like to bring up Coach Gonzalez, the head coach of the Lakeview Maiden Girls' soccer team, who had a historical season this year. And come on up, Coach Gonzalez, and ladies, come on.
First of all, thank you all very much for allowing us to be here, be recognized. As you can see, these beautiful young ladies are not only soccer players, but you can see the diverse group that we have, and I'm so proud of these young ladies. Of course, this year, we were assisted by my assistant, Bianca Budway. Coach Chant did say it was a historical year, because it was. These young ladies are amazing. Not only were they for the fourth-year district champions, they were by-district champions, they were area champions. We went to the regional quarterfinals, play a ranked number-five team, and, you know, it was an amazing fight to do what we did, and I'm so proud of what these young ladies have done. I'm going to go ahead and call each one and be recognized. First one is going to be number-one, Alyssa De La Cruz. She was our second-team All-District offense. Number-two, Alexis Garcia, All-District Honorable Mention. Number-three, we have Ally Flores. She was the MVP Offensive Player, All-District Player of the Year. Number-four, Isabel Cabrera. She was first-team District All-District Defender. We have number-nine, Eliana Soria. She was first-team Defender, All-District. We have number-ten, a freshman, Sarai Rodriguez. I apologize, I meant to mention that these are juniors and sophomores and juniors that were, that I just announced. Number-eleven, junior Jasmine Flores. She was the co-MVP Player of the Year for our district, All-District. Number-fourteen, another freshman, Brianna Lopez, All-District Honorable Mention. Number-fifteen, one of our seniors, All-District Second Team Defender, Amore Collins. Number-sixteen, senior Bianca Aguilera. Number-eighteen, junior Angelina Ramírez. Number-twenty, junior Faith Miller, first-team offense and midfielder, All-District. Another senior, we have twenty-two, Alicia Sanchez. We have another junior, Janessa Rocha, second-team defender, All-District. And we have our goalie, who was named first-team goalie, All-District, Jennifer Mata. Our manager, also junior, Lizzie Cortez. And again, so proud of this team, not only because sadly to say we're losing five of our seniors, but we're bringing back 15 juniors, so we plan to be here next year. Thank you very much.
Congrats. Good job, guys. Congratulations. You guys did well. Great job. Great job. You fought everything. Way to go. Congratulations. Good job. Congrats. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach Gonzalez. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. 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 Thank you, Coach. Thank you. 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 I apologize, I also want to thank Coach Hammack, my assistant here. Hey, guys, stay up there long enough for your parents to get pictures, too, so don't break up too quick. Yeah, come to the, come to the front, ladies, y'all can get them up front, personal. Yeah, there you go. Is it JB Smile, is that right, or JD Smile? Yeah, y'all come get it.
All right, I'm now going to turn it over to, you think you're right? Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Whitney Wood and Molly Turk, our directors of communication, for some other recognitions.
Well, some wonderful San Angelo ISD athletes, and we're going to follow that by continuing to celebrate all the ways our students are smart. Y'all got to hear some of the sounds and see some of the sights of some of those amazing fine arts students. And our director of advanced academics and fine arts, Tiffany Heebner, is going to tell you a little bit more about those.
I hope you, y'all, this is just so exciting, celebrating students tonight, it's so awesome. So, we're going to go ahead, I'm just going to go ahead and get started. So, our first one up is Josh Bailey, he is our band director at Lakeview High School. Let, Josh.
Like she said, I'm Josh Bailey, the band director over at Lakeview High School. We also have Jesse Bailey, he's the other band director at Lakeview High School, no relation. But this year, I just want to talk to y'all, brag on our kids a little bit about what all we did this year. We went to four marching contests at the beginning of the year. We went to the Concho Classic here in town, got first division and third place. Went to the big country marching contest in Abilene, first division and second place. Went to the region marching contest, got ones, advanced to area, where we placed eight, we tied for eighth out of seventeen bands, and they take seven to finals. It was really, really close, and the kids are itching to get out there for next year. Already began preparations for next year's marching show and everything. We had sixteen students in the region band and six advanced to area, and then we did have an all-stater this year in band. What else did we do? I made my list. We had eight students participate in solo ensemble. They received first divisions, did a great job. We hosted high school region jazz auditions, we hosted middle school region band auditions. There were about eight hundred students over at Lakeview High School. We hosted a UIL concert and sight-reading contest. And next week, we're hosting solo and ensemble contests for the San Angelo Middle Schools. And it's really great to host those events, because we have all of our students participate and help set up and help break down and help run the contest. So, it's really awesome for them to get to host. Concert and sight-reading, our honor band received a sweepstakes, and our symphonic band also did, and they did awesome, played great. Putting on a percussion concert next week on Tuesday at 6:30 over at Lakeview. We have our spring concert, where we include all the Lincoln and Lakeview bands over at the River Stage. And that's on May nineteenth, it's on Thursday night. It's great to bring, bring a cooler, bring your chairs, have a good time with family, and hang out at the River Stage, we play a lot of fun music. And we have a really good time at our Lakeview Band concerts. It's been an awesome year on the north side, and I truly enjoy working here in San Angelo ISD and really enjoy working with the kids over there. We have a really great time, and I like to always make sure to give thanks to all the other band directors, Ms. Clark and Ms. Gonzalez over at Lincoln, and then Jesse Bailey. We make a great team, and we got some awesome kids over there. And thank you for letting me lead that group up our precinct hall. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosanda Ramos, I'm the mariachi director for the Lakeview High School Mariachi. We've had a great, great year. This year, we had the first in-person all-region mariachi auditions that included us and Odessa and Midland. And we had the majority of students from our group make, make it to the region band. We had region mariachi, we had nine students make it to the, to the region mariachi. And we hosted, Lakeview also hosted the region, first region mariachi. And we're very excited about that, because we had several students who were able to advance to area, and we had some students placed really close to the state contest, where I think in the next coming years, we may have our first state mariachi musician from Lakeview coming out. So, I'm really, really excited about that, so that's what we did this last semester. We had several students get to go and perform in Washington DC. Very, very awesome trip that we took with, with students, and they got to play in front of ambassadors, and it was a really amazing experience for them. I know it's going to be life-changing for them, it was, it was for sure for me as well. This year, we've gone already to three competitions, let's see, maybe four. I can't even keep track anymore. They're all down in the valley. We've gone to Edinburgh, Texas, where we placed first place in the 4A Division for mariachi. And then this Thursday, we're going all the way back down to Brownsville, Texas. And we're going to be going to another competition that's being held down there. So, we're excited, I'm, we're getting, the kids are getting a little weary, but I know, I told them, we got one more, let's go, one more, one more. So, it'll be a fun trip, it's only about eight hours on the bus, it'll be fine. So, it's, the kids have been doing a great job, I'm very proud of them. We also have our concert on Cinco de Mayo on Thursday at the River Stage. And we would like to invite any of you guys to come out, it's going to be a great show, it'll be all of the Lincoln mariachi and the Lakeview mariachi. And of course, I would also like to thank Mr. Bailey and all the awesome fine arts at Lakeview, they're very supportive, we're a great team. And of course, Mr. Ramirez, who's always got our back when anything that we decide to do. So, thank you, guys.
Hello. My name, I can lower that, okay, sorry, I am not tall. My name is Amy Harris, I'm the choir director at Lakeview High School and Lincoln Middle School. The big exciting things that we want to share right now, I, I had five students at the high school compete in the solo and ensemble competition. I have three going to state solo and ensemble competition in Austin here in June. My senior, Desiree Lobadel, whom spoke to y'all at the showcase, let y'all know what we were singing. She's advancing on the Black Swan aria from "The Medium" by Menotti. Eliza, also known as Ruby Fernandez, who is advancing on "Ode de mi dolce ador", and she's a junior. And a freshman, actually, by the name of Anna Bain, advancing on "Starchen" by Brahms. So, that's really exciting for us here this week, actually, Friday and Saturday, we're doing two performances of this. We will be having what we call our North Side Notes Show Choir Performances, which is also doubling as a food drive for the Concho Valley Regional Food Bank. I want to start getting these kids involved in community service, things like that, that I think are good for them. And the really fun thing about the show choir performance is that these kids, I wanted it to be their show. They picked the music, they made the choreography. I taught the music, but they learned the music, they learned the choreography, they put this together, they were exhibiting leadership, creativity, communication skills. And it's beyond exciting that they're getting to put this together, see how it goes, and have a, go to a good cause. So, if anybody wants to come see that, April twenty-second, 6:00 PM, Lakeview High School Auditorium, and April twenty-third, 3:00 PM, at Lakeview High School Auditorium. That's going to be really exciting. The only admission is please bring canned food for the food drive. It's going to be really exciting, and they, they've worked really hard for this. And it is Lincoln Middle School and Lakeview High School. My goal being to start streamlining these programs, where instead of it feeling like they're separate, it can be one big program, so that some of these middle school, school students come in with high school mentors before they get there. And then also, on May sixteenth, we'll be having our spring show orchestra, we'll actually be combining with my, their varsity orchestra with my varsity choir, for a piece called "In Solo, Jesus Quickly Come", which is a beautiful piece, it's a piece I've been wanting them to work on, and I'm really excited for them to get to do together. So, thank, thank.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Infante, I am the orchestra director at Lincoln Middle School and Lakeview High School. Earlier downstairs, you guys heard my state quintet, we're so excited, these kiddos work so hard. And I basically gave them the music and said, go. Like, listen to recordings, you know, if you need extra help, little tiny critiques, like, ask me, but other than that, it's, it's your baby, you do it. And so, I'm super excited that they're the first group from Lakeview to head to state solo and ensemble in about five or six years, so I'm incredibly proud of them. Within that state quintet group, we have two soloists, we have a violin soloist, he's a sophomore, his name is Leonardo Villarreal, you saw him on the soccer team, wonderful student. He's going to be performing "Spring" by Vivaldi. And then my cellist, Heidi Bundick, she is also a sophomore, and she plans to be an orchestra teacher someday, and she was in the all-state band for Mr. Bailey, so she's a wonderful student as well. And she's playing "Divimento" by Hayden. So, those kids are super excited. Like Ms. Harris said, we are combining for a concert at the Murphy Performance Hall on May sixteenth. And along with that, during my concert, my students last year for UIL, they performed a piece called "Lacrimosa" by Mozart. It's a very famous choral piece, comes from Mozart's Requiem. And so, I thought it'd be a cool idea to have them sing it along with us. So, add some Latin words to it and really spice it up. This year, we have not gone to UIL yet, we go on Wednesday. But I'm hoping to continue the trend. My first year with them, we got a four in concert and a three in sight-reading. My next year, we got a two in sight-reading and a three in concert. My goal this year is to get a one in sight-reading and a two in concert.
I'm Head Knutson, I'm the theater director out at Lakeview. And it's been a great year to finally get back onstage and get to do some stuff. And we kind of eased into the year, we had a Christmas production in December that we did, and then we moved into our competition with our one-act play, which y'all saw a snippet of, "Duck Hunter Shoots Angel". We had a really good season this year and advanced to the bi-district area, and that's been the first time, I think, in eight years that we've advanced from district. So, that was a good feeling for the kids, they've had fun with it. We had some, three students get awards, we had three acting awards and one technical award at the district competition, and then I had three kids at the bi-district competition who also received honorable mention and All-Star Cast Awards. So, it's been a great year, and I'm looking forward to big things as we head into the next school year. And thank y'all for everything y'all do to support us.
Hi. So, my name is Alma Gonzalez, I am the art teacher at Lakeview High School. It's, it's been a year. So, Lakeview and Lincoln art departments have combined together, and we have done two fabulous shows this year with the San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center, which is, and the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, we did one for the Hispanic Heritage Month, and one for Dia de los Muertos, all part of a big art community downtown event. We also have competed in the Visual Arts Scholastic Event, or BASE for art students. A total of eight students competed, four of which moved on to region, but we did not have any, hopefully next year. We also competed in the talk show and rodeo competition. And we brought home a whopping eighteen photo ribbons for our, and so, we're just kind of continuing, hopefully, do one more big event before the year ends.
My name is Jason Jones, I'm the band director at Central. It's always a great honor to come stand before you and talk about our amazing students. We've had a great year, it was nice to be able to kind of go back to some normalcy. The band earned a first division at marching contest, we got to go to area, traveled all the way to El Paso. Great, great time out there, the kids performed really well. We earned, just recently, the, the top band earned sweepstakes at the level, and so, it's nice to have a full sweepstakes, including marching, concert, and sight-reading. We haven't done that since before I was here, because of COVID. We had a marching in 2019, concert in 2021, because everything got canceled. But now, we've got marching, concert, and sight-reading, I've done that, it's awesome. The wind ensemble, because of the concert, sweepstakes last year, was selected to perform at the UIL State Wind Ensemble. So, on May the seventh, we'll be going to Austin to perform at UT with sixteen, fifteen other bands from across the state at the State Wind Ensemble Festival. In December, we had twenty-four students make the region band, eight students qualified for area, and then we had one student make the all-state band, which you've met her, Lauren Ochoa, and this is her second year to make it. At solo and ensemble, we had seventeen students make solos, first-division solos, forty students make first-division ensembles, and thirty-eight students advance to the state solo and ensemble contest. This Sunday, April twenty-fourth, we'll have our spring concert at the Sarah Bernhardt Theater at Central, we're very excited to be able to play some fun music for you. I can't go without recognizing my awesome team of band directors, Mike Berry, Stephanie Dearborn, Kristen Ellis, Caleb Leonard, and Crystal Mendez, our guard instructor. So, I want to say thank you for all the support you give, it's not like this everywhere. I talk to friends and they complain, and I say, I don't have it like that, I have it fantastic, and that's because of you, so thank you so much.
I can sing in front of people all day, it's something else. My name is Jess Colson, I teach music partners at Central, this is our first year for this class. And last year, when I had my end-of-year appraisal with Mr. Waters, I said, hey, who's teaching music partners? And he said, I don't know, probably one of the band directors. And I went, I'll do it. My bachelor's is in music, and I teach English, so I want, I want a music class. So, that's, that's how this started. I spent some time over the summer working with Tiffany Heebner, Jared Capps from Crockett, two of the Bannaker teachers, and a music therapist, Amy Rogers. She helps me, she comes in once a week and leads a lesson, and then I build off of that. But the thing I love about this class is that it gives our profound, our students with profound special needs, a chance to do fine arts and a chance to do music. And I think that's so important. And I have a statement from a parent who asked me to read this. I hate that I can't be there today, but I would like to thank SAISD for providing this opportunity, so sorry. I get really emotional about this class. For providing this opportunity for our kids, and I hope today, they can witness how this program can impact their lives and provide a wonderful opportunity for them. All of us as parents can hope for and pray for is our kids to be accepted and included. Our kids want the same, to be a part of something. This is a great start, and I hope they will consider expanding and creating more opportunities for our kids through sports and the arts. And that is from Jennifer Wallace, whose daughter Lauren, you saw downstairs, she was signing with us. So, I want to thank Mr. Waters for the opportunity to do this class, and I thank you for allowing us to, to give this a shot. And I, I will continue to teach music partners for as long as I have students enrolled. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Landon Gilmore, I'm the head choir director at Central High School, and also serve as the chair for the Region Six Vocal Division of TMA. Tonight, I've also got my associate, Ms. Sunday Bott, there in the back with us. We'll keep it real brief for you tonight, so just a year summary, we were excited this fall to have around thirty students make a region choir, and as you know, when we saw you in February, we had two students named an all-state choir. And one of the students, Elijah, who was the three-year member, he was selected as a soloist yet again with the, with the all-state group he was a part of, so that was exciting. We just went to UIL Concert and Sight-Reading Contest last week on Tuesday and Wednesday. Mrs. Bott and I took a, a task of looking back to see how long we have been having sweepstakes choirs at Central. And as about as best we can tell, it's, it's going on seventy years. We, we found trophies going back consistently to the nineteen fifties. And I don't know if that's where it stopped, or we just started throwing them away after that point, I don't know. But we're happy to say that that continues. All of our groups this year earned an excellent or better. Our Bella Voce Upper Classman Ladies Group that Mrs. Bott directs, they got a superior in sight-reading. And then our Corral, which is our varsity mixed choir, they got a clean sweepstakes, which is ones across the board in concert and sight-reading. So, they did very well last week. We're looking forward to state UIL solo contest next month at the UT Austin campus. We have twenty-three students competing in that as soloists. And then I'd just like to invite you, if you would like to see any of our students perform the group you saw tonight, that was a much, much more sedate version of what they do. Normally, there are costumes and lights and kick dancing and all sorts of crazy stuff, but their show is next Friday, April the twenty-ninth, at Seppac Brooks &amp; Bates Theater at 7:00 PM. And then our spring choir concert is at Holy Angels Catholic Church on Monday, May sixteenth, at 7:00 PM. We thank you for all of your support and appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Emily Rocha, I'm the orchestra director at Central High School, and I have the privilege of teaching together with Michael Martin, who can't be here tonight, but he's fantastic. I, first of all, want to thank you for all of your support. I truly believe that we teach in the best school district in the state of Texas. And I'm very privileged, I, I feel very privileged, because as Jason said, when I talk to friends from other school districts, I don't hear that. And I'm so happy here and grateful for all of your support. I'm going to read you some numbers, and then I'm going to talk to you about the important parts of our program. So, we had thirteen students make all region, we had four advanced to area, and we actually had our first all-stater since 2004. And he was actually the first bassist to make all state from Central since nineteen ninety-one, so over thirty years. We had twenty-seven students make the highest ranking at solo and ensemble, eight are advancing to state. And at concert and sight-reading, all of our groups, from our varsity orchestra to our sub-non-varsity B, made sweepstakes, with our top two orchestras making clean sweepstakes. And I should say earned sweepstakes, because they were really tough. So, let's move on to the important things, not the numbers. Many of our students entered this year behind, because they either were not in school last year, or they were in and out of school. And we feel like they're on level. In fact, at concert and sight-reading, we took above the requirement in all of our groups. We have a student-led program. Our students teach each other, we just give them the resources. And our top two orchestras, many sectionals are student-led, you saw our section leaders from our top orchestra perform earlier this evening. And in all groups, our students are encouraged to give feedback and have an active role in our rehearsal process. We have a very active group of orchestra officers who plan socials, put together creative ideas, and, and put them in motion, don't just have creative ideas, but they make them happen. And they help create an accepting and positive environment. We believe that your physical location in the room doesn't determine your value. Or if you've had a kid in orchestra or band, that would be your chair. Your chair placement does not determine your value. And we have nearly one hundred percent retention over the past couple of years, and that's because our kids are so accepting. I want to close by reading you a comment from our, one of our judges from UIL. He wrote, "It is such a rare and special occurrence to hear a high school orchestra play this well. It was an honor to listen to your group, you have something very, very special. We are so privileged to have the students that we do, and so blessed to have them here in San Angelo ISD. Thank you."
Hello, I'm Laura Smith, and I teach theater at Central High School, and my wonderful associate, Misty Siler, is back here as well. I want to echo the thanks that everyone has given, we really appreciate your has given. We really appreciate your support. We appreciate you taking the time to let us come and show off and also to brag about our wonderful students. I want to thank Mr. Waters and Jason for being a great leader of our department. And I agree with Emily that the numbers are wonderful, but the most important part is the students. So I just want to brag on our kids. We have an active thespian honor troupe. Our students are members of the International Thespian Society, which is a worldwide organization and honors fraternity. We have monthly meetings. They put out a newsletter. They do service projects. They, this year, they cleaned up trash at the Reteroio. They operated karaoke during Christmas at Central, trick or treated for canned goods to donate to Restraite Ministries. And it's all produced and organized by our student board of nine students. We performed two full-length productions this fall. We had Crimes of the Heart in October and we had the Picasso at the La Pina Gil by Steve Martin in December. We also had four student-directed plays that we put on for the public in November. All of these are student-led. They're student-designed. They build the sets. They take care of the lights and the sound. Then in February, we hosted our twelfth annual Bannaker Dance, where the theater students host the students that are special needs in the Bannaker Hall for a Valentine's Dance. And so the students put that on every year. In March, we went to UIL One Act Play. We earned three acting awards. We had Jason Hartzky and Malachi Shabaria were honorable mention All-Star Cast and Tyree Lewis earned All-Star Cast honors. Currently, we are working on Spring Into Theater, our twentieth annual variety show we've been doing. This will be twenty years. So that will be May 12th and 13th. So you're all invited to that. And then also we're working on JV One Act Play that we'll be taking to Odessa on the 14th. So again, thank you so much for everything. We really appreciate.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Horner and I am one of the six art teachers at Central High School, representing the visual side of the, right? And since it's visual, I put this together just real quick. And I'm going to try to stay on task because I like to talk. But everybody's done pretty good tonight. So these were some of the accolades from CHS this year. We had entries in the San Angeles Stock Show and Rodeo also. One of our students had best of show and original ceramic entry. And we don't have a picture of it because it was there and back. And I will show you some of her artwork in another slide in just a second, too. We've also had participants in the visual, pardon me, the Visual Arts Scholastic Event, which is the UIL-based art competition. We sponsor it through Region 15. It was virtual again this year. But when it's not virtual, we hosted at Central High School. And the one thing I like about that, too, is we did that in conjunction with Lakeview. We're the two biggest schools in the region. So we usually have a lot of participants that way. We had over seventy-five artworks entered into the regional event this year. And then from that, from that event, the regional competition, the superior scores of four were, which is the highest score that the kids can get, their artworks were advanced to the area judging. Forty-seven of those students received that superior score. And then from the area judging, those, all those artworks are looked at and then they pick the state qualifying artworks that go to the state event. The state event's going to be in San Marcos at the end of April, in fact, in two weeks. And then I have some slides to show you of the state advanced artwork. We also had our art club started this year by a, one of our new teachers, Heather Shub York. She's a rock star when it comes to stuff like that. And we have a lot of enthusiasm for that and potential with the art club there. One of the first things that the art club did was they hosted a senior art show at the Coop Gallery, which was at the end of March. And then we just recently had work, student ceramic work, in a Coop Gallery show in conjunction with the National Ceramics Competition, which is going on right now. But they hosted, at the opening last weekend, they hosted a student show at the Coop. It was also sponsored by the Concho Clay Studio, which is located at Sampa also. ASU used to have their ceramics studio there. And once they moved back to ASU, then that studio was open and they've created a really nice studio there. If anybody needs clay therapy, they can go and do this and take workshops there. We also had, and this is incorrect because as I typed this up this afternoon, we're talking about the kids that lettered in art. We had four students. And as we were doing this, I had kids checking all their credits. And we've got about ten or twelve kids that lettered in art here, mainly seniors. So the kids think that's kind of cool, too, to be able to letter in their art, which is one of their things that they're involved in. See if I got this right. So this would be the state advancing artwork. Y'all saw this downstairs, if you were downstairs in the, for the performances for this evening. This is a colored pencil piece by Petra Neal. The division means that she has credits that gives her a division, too. So she's the equivalent of a student who's got two credits in art. This is a ceramic piece by Haley Anikama. And she's also the student whose piece got best of show at the Creative Arts Event at the Stock Show and Rodeo. It's not this particular piece, but it's another one. This is another piece. This is a colored pencil piece, Casasia Dunlap. So those are our three state advancing artworks that are going at the high school level. I did want to, I did want to add this also, too. We did have our middle school, some of our middle schools this year participate in their own vase. There's a junior vase event. And it was virtual also. So these are some of the artworks that were, that advanced to their highest level. They don't have a state event, but they medal. And it's called a platinum medal. So they get a nice medal. So they, they have a one-day event, but they get to advance beyond just the regional event. This is one of the pieces by Violet Bearden. And what, it was Megan Brown from Glen Middle School. That was her teacher. It's an acrylic painting. Adeline McCollum, also another acrylic painting and a little bit of glitter. Because when I read her description, she talked about glitter. It's on the piece somewhere. This is actually a paper mache sculpture by Allison Garnett named Brownie, which is a really cool piece. If you know what paper mache is, it's just paper mache. Think of it. This is Kenley Owens, Watchful Eyes. It's another acrylic painting piece also. That would be the junior event. Vase also sponsors a team event, which is the elementary schools, the elementary arts. And I just always want to think about the potential we could have if we have our elementary art kids and we have that in our arts again, I mean, in our schools again. So I want to mention that while I have the floor here to say that, too, though. Other than that, thank you very much for having us tonight and all the support we have for the visual arts and the performing arts.
Do we want to picture? But I just have to say, y'all, anytime I go over there, over to Lincoln or Lakeview, these guys are working together. And same thing at Central. I walked into music partners the other day and here's, you know, the bands helping, music partners, they're coming in, orchestra. We could not have better teachers and directors in fine arts. We really couldn't. They are phenomenal, each and every one of them. And they give their heart and soul for this job and their kids. We are very, very blessed. So y'all mind coming up and taking pictures?
It's so wonderful to see that creation of our four Cs in action with those students. It was wonderful. For our final recognition of the evening, Mr. Parker and distinguished members of the board, we have an opportunity to recognize some very special children. As you know, here in San Angelo, we are blessed to have a longstanding partnership supporting the men, women, and families of Goodfellow Air Force Base. Strong military families call our community home and add so much to our West Texas community and our San Angelo ISD schools. Today, as part of Month of the Military Child this April, we honor and recognize the commitment, sacrifice, and resiliency of our military's youngest heroes for their role in supporting the United States Armed Forces and our nation. In our district, we have nearly eight hundred military-connected children and are also proudly home to four TEA Purple Star campuses, Bel Air Elementary, Glenmore Elementary, Glen Middle School, and Central High School. The Purple Star designation recognizes Texas schools that show their support and commitment to meeting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. This Wednesday, April 20th, San Angelo ISD will join the city of San Angelo and Goodfellow Air Force Base in inviting the community and our schools to purple up, to show support of our military children by wearing the color purple. So please mark your calendars. Tonight, to join us in this recognition, we have special guests from Goodfellow, including school liaison Theresa Goodwin, who I know you all know, executive director of the Seventeenth Training Wing Chad Dowell, Child and Youth Flight Chief Jane Marie Kopa-Sinski, Youth Director Terry Kilgore, School Age Coordinator and Youth Mentor Thomas Engel, Youth Specialist and Youth Mentor Amanda Rista, Starbase Director Jesse Longoria, who you're going to hear from later, and Starbase Teacher Melissa Rocha. We are also honored to have with us one of our outstanding military-connected students, a shining example of what this month is all about, Maisha Allen. Maisha is a sophomore at Central High School and was recently named the Boys and Girls Club of America Texas Military Youth of the Year for going above and beyond in academics, character, leadership, and community service. Maisha is the first San Angelo ISD and first Goodfellow Air Force Base student to receive this distinct honor and was selected over thousands of students from across Texas. But that's enough for me. I want you to be able to hear directly from this young man. So Maisha, if you would come up here for just a moment.
Stay my speech. Isolation, perseverance, passion. These are the three words that best describe my past experiences as a youth. Hello, my name is Maisha Allen. I'm the current Goodfellow Youth of the Year and I feel very blessed to be here. Isolation. This is the state of being separate from others. Studies show that youth who use social media today feel very isolated. For those who are not allowed to use social media, like me, we personally feel isolated, too. But this is mainly because of missing out. However, I believe that those who do use social media have to face a lot more problems than what most of us realize. For example, at my school, there's lots of cyberbullying. And in one instance, some kids were even making websites where they would make fun of other kids. Now, I never had to face this issue personally, but that's not that I know of. And there's other problems, such as the increased suicide and depression rates that have been caused from social media. So the youth of our generation have had to persevere through these problems. Perseverance. This is the persistence in doing something despite difficulty or delay in success. Now, for me, I've had to persevere through playing sports, especially basketball, for the past several years. I worked extremely hard to reach my goal of making the school team. I basically sacrificed everything. But most of all, it was time. Time with friends, family, my hobbies and more. And despite all my efforts, all I got was to play for one minute in one single game. And so I learned that sometimes you need to accept your weaknesses and use your strengths. So later that semester, I left the team. This was the toughest decision, but I knew it was best for me. However, this was how I discovered some of my new passions. Passion. This is to have an intense desire or enthusiasm for something. My new passions were towards things like computer science, education, and problem solving. And using my passions, I want to battle against the problems that we've been seeing from social media. For example, I like to program artificial intelligence that could be used to expose those who hack into other people's privacy instead of them exposing others. I'd also like to create apps that could be used to track down cyberbullying. I'd even like to somehow invent positive games that could be used to cure or reduce the depression, stress, or even anxiety caused from social media. And so thanks to the youth center, I've been able to focus on my opportunities and goals like these. And I've been, I've been able to make new friends and begin on a new path in my life. So I like to share my knowledge and experience with others so that we can all become better than we were yesterday. Thank you for this opportunity and I like to make the best of what I have.
Give me just a second. That was amazing. We're so proud of you. So thank you, Maisha. And I want to add that Maisha's father, retired Major Lamont Allen, who is also one of our SAISD difference makers at San Jacinto. Again, we want to remind our community to join us in making an extra effort to uplift our military families and salute the unique contribution and resilience of our military children this month and to wear purple on Wednesday. At this time, I ask our special guests from Goodfellow to come join us and Maisha and Dr. Detloff for a photo. And while we're taking the photo, we're going to share a homecoming video of a Bel Air family from earlier this year that exemplifies why this is such a special month. So thank you. I also just learned that his brother just joined the Air Force, Atri, who is a senior at Central High School. So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Whitney, you and Molly got a song and dance? Are you through? Great job, guys. I appreciate it. All right. We'll go on. Again, you can see why these are special meetings for us. Appreciate all those that we honored and all those that helped to put this together and the families that we just, and the students that were just here on this last recognition. All right, we, let me ask the board team, everybody ready to go forward? Anybody need to take a break? Okay, let's go. We have our minutes from March 21, 2022, Special Finance Pre-A agenda meeting, and our minutes from March 28, 2022, regular board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from March 21, 2022, and March 28, 2022, as printed.
Well, we had a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Lupita to approve this agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Now, we're at a point where I mentioned in my earlier comments when we started the meeting, if there's anyone here that has public comments on any topics not on the agenda, this is the time to come forward. I see someone coming forward. Did we get a sheet filled out? It's all right. I just want to make sure we have one filled out. We always do that also, so. That's all right. Before you leave, when you leave, sir, just fill out that comments. We'll have it for our little sheet that has your name and contact information that we have for our record. If you'll start off, just tell us your name, so we'll have that on the record.
My name's Virgil Pacetti. I'm a concerned father, my student. My son is a student of your district. I'm just introducing myself to you because I've started a journey on trying to get him some help. I've met a lot of the people that are already in here, and I wanted to meet the board members. I've emailed multiple of y'all. I've met with two of you. I'm hoping the rest will respond to me soon. You know, really just digging around in the last three years, trying to get some help from my son, and finally gave up a couple months ago and just said, well, I'm going to start going up to the school district. And what I have found up here is that, you know, there's a narrative and there's an agenda, and I was told that, you know, that narrative isn't documented, so I can't ask for a FOIA on it. So anything that's not documented, I can't ask for. So, you know, I just feel like there's a lot of things not being told to the public, and the more you ask, the more they don't want you to know. And, you know, if we would spend as much time and passion as we do trying to suppress the information as we do fixing the problem, I probably wouldn't be standing here right now. You know, we're real good at, you know, trying to say we're going to implement corrective actions, but anytime you talk about preventive actions, you know, you get the song and dance. There's 14,000 students here. We can't just focus on one thing, this and that. And, you know, my suggestion to that is, well, at what point do we take action? Is it a thousand students? Is it 2,000 students? At what point do we have to implement corrective actions instead of only doing preventive actions? You know, at some point, we need to do some soul searching. We need to figure out why we're trying to suppress the narrative and why there is a secret narrative. You know, the teachers here, some of the principals I've talked to, I said, well, you know, I'd really like to roll this out. I'd like to see y'all do this, what you're doing in other schools, and they say, we can't do that right now. We're not allowed to do that. And then when you come here and say, well, how come we haven't rolled this out in this school? Well, we're doing a flexible rollout, and, you know, it's really up to the principal. Well, I had literally just got through talking to the principal, saying that administration told him not to do it. So, you know, we need to get our story together. We need to figure out what's best for the kids, and I hope that that secret narrative is taking care of the kids and it's not something else. There's definitely a disconnect between administration and the teachers and the parents. It's very tribal. It's very, we have to protect the narrative. We can't let anything negative come out, and we'd rather fall on our own sword than admit that there's a problem. So, you know, I know y'all can't speak back. Y'all can't respond to me. All I can do is introduce you and hope that as I send emails to the board members that all, you know, they'll at least take the time out, even if it's only 30 minutes, to meet with me and hear my concerns. I'd like to hear what your thoughts are and what your goals and, you know, what you think the district should be, and hopefully we can work together instead of, you know, just every time I ask a question, I get handed a FOIA request, and then maybe in 10 days, I'll be told. I'd rather just have a, you know, intellectual conversation with you where we can be open and free and say, hey, here's my thoughts. What are yours? And maybe we could look at the data together instead of, here's your form, see you in 10 days if you're lucky. So, that's my thoughts, and I hope to see y'all in future meetings and hope that we can meet, you know, behind the scenes and maybe try to do something that's going to make it a better place for the kids, because ultimately, that should be your number one thing, is the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming, and you're correct, as you heard in my earlier comments, we just can't speak to you on this because it wasn't posted as an agenda item, but I do appreciate you coming up. Is there anyone else that has any public comment on an agenda that's not on our meeting? Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McFarland for our student enrollment report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, our enrollment report tonight comes from Monday, March the 28th, which was the 28th Monday of the school year. And for enrollment numbers in the elementary level, we had 6,804 students. At the middle school level, 3,190 students, and at the high school level, 4,032 students. For a total district enrollment on the 28th Monday of the school year of 13,695. And in comparison to the 28th Monday of last school year, that is down approximately 231 students from the exact same time last year. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. Dr. Detloff, is there anything under our partnership with Goodfellow?
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, members of the board, as Ms. Wood indicated earlier, San Angelo continues to shine because of its partnership and relationship with Goodfellow Air Force Base. And at this time, I'll have Molly Turk come up to the lectern, and she will introduce our next segment with Goodfellow Air Force Base.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. We're excited to have Starbase Director, retired Chief Master Sergeant Jesse Longoria here. Before he comes up, I know he's going to tell you some great things about our Starbase program, but we thought that we'd love to give you a visual representation of that project, and so we were just at Starbase last week. So we want to watch the short video, and then Jesse will come on up. Zach, we need your technical expertise.
Ignition sequence start. Six, five, four, three, two, one, zero. Liftoff. We have a liftoff.
Starbase is a DOD-funded program where we bring in anywhere from 1,500 to 1,700 kiddos a year from San Angelo and the surrounding areas, and we teach them 25 hours of science, technology, engineering, and math. As soon as they walk through that door, we hit the ground running. We typically open up with a CAD program, computer-aided design, every morning, and then we slowly get into all of our different lessons. But it's about five nonstop hours, and they are actively moving around, doing some sort of activity, and just getting their hands in on everything.
They get a little bit of physics, chemistry, engineering, obviously mathematics, rockets 101.
We have Newton's laws of motion, as well as they learn about the different types of energy. They learn about atoms that make up molecules.
They learn about 3D printing and printers. They also learn about robotics.
The robotics challenge is they're given four different paths. They have to learn how to calculate the number of rotations it takes to travel a certain distance or to turn a certain degree, and then they have to complete all of those paths.
My favorite activity was the Lego cars because there's a lot of teamwork involved. So, like, I would do the calculations, and my partner would put it on the track and start the program.
One of the most important things is not only that they're learning, but they're having fun, and they can associate learning with a good time. And so hopefully, they get a passion for that as they come through this program.
The ultimate goal is to really expose them, kind of plant the seed, so to speak, and hopefully, they follow some sort of career path, whether it's through the civilian sector, DOD, or the military.
I was super excited because, like, I've always wanted to, like, be an engineer and, like, be like a pilot and be involved with all the mechanical stuff. And going there was awesome, but when I left, I still wanted to do it because of how much fun it was.
But, you know, Goodfellow was chosen as a host site. We are one of four, you know, STEM Starbase programs in the state of Texas, and we're happy to have one right here on our own backyard here in West Texas.
So we shared this video on Friday to showcase our Starbase program, which all our fifth graders attend for five days all year long. And I just want to share one comment we got from one of our teachers at Santa Rita. She says, "This program is one that third graders not only remember, but also find passion in those learning experiences that carry them into their future. We love Starbase for its hands-on learning experiences, team-building activities, and the wealth of knowledge that packed, that is packed into just five short days." So Jesse will give you all of the other great information, but we're very excited about our Starbase program and this partnership. Jesse?
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Thanks for having me here tonight. So obviously, you know, your communications team did a great job putting the video together and kind of tells you what Starbase it's all about in a nutshell. But really, just, we do the 25 hours, 35 objectives of the STEM concepts, and really, really, that goes a long way to include really what they learn as critical thinking skills, team-building skills, and most importantly, mission accomplishment that goes along with the 25 hours. Now, it's important to understand, not every base or military community has one of these programs. So just a little bit of background on the program. It started back in, between Detroit Public School System and Self-First Air National Guard back in the early 90s. Finally, about mid-'90s, got congressionally funded, and to date, has grown to about 80. This coming year, they want to add 10 more, so it keeps on growing. But certainly, as I mentioned in the video, we're very happy to have here one in West Texas, right in our own backyard, definitely benefiting the kids and community. Now, this year, we started on target and on time versus last year. We had a nine-week delay just due to the COVID numbers. So really, we've graduated 16 of your 17 elementary, fifth-grade schools, and I say that because Glenmore's coming back. Last week in May, finished them two days that they missed during the snow days in February. So they're doing very well. The teachers come very excited, very energetic, along with, obviously, the kids at that point, you know, so they're ready to rock and roll by the time they get there, 9 o'clock, and the bus picks them up at 2 o'clock every day for five hours. So really, I just want to give a shout out to your bus drivers. This program, I'm telling you folks, cannot work without bus drivers. And reading some of the reports from other Starbases across the country, we're very fortunate to have a great bus transportation team that supports our kids every day, but we certainly appreciate it. So really, that's a quick report in a nutshell. The second thing I want to do is, we took the time to do some very coveted 3D-printed coins, and the coin that you'll receive tonight, it does, that you have there in your hand, it shows a B25 that sits on a static display as you're going to Goodfellow Air Force Base, along with the tail number. So we certainly appreciate your leadership and support, and, you know, certainly, we hope to support your kids. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions for me about anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Longoria, and thanks for all you do with the Starbase. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Detloff and Dr. Ritter for our campus review of evidence reports.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker. Excuse me, let me make sure this microphone is on. Mr. Parker, members of the board, we are once again proud to present to you our campus principals with our evidence review report. So again, these reports were started a few months ago, and all of our principals have done an incredible job of sharing student successes at their campuses, and as we saw earlier tonight in our student showcase, just some of the unique attributes of each campus and why public schools are still an incredible experience. And we are so fortunate in San Angelo and San Angelo ISD to have stellar leaders and students that are providing the conditions for success for students. So I will turn it over to Wes Underwood, and he will make some proper introductions.
President Parker, Dr. Detloff, Board of Trustees, thanks. We got to see so much great things happening at our campuses this evening. Got to see some student activities, student smartness from the fine arts and all kinds of things, and that's always a great way to get the good. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce our three campus principals that are going to be presenting tonight. We're concluding our campus presentations. We have our three high school principals. We have Zach Ramirez, who is the principal at Lakeview High School. We have Claudia Becerra, who is the principal at Hayes and at Carver. There's Waters there in the back, who is the principal at Central and Central at Oaks. So we're excited to have all them. You're going to hear some challenges. You're going to get to hear from students, and you're going to get to hear about some good things that are going on. So we're excited to have them, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ramirez.
I'm going to try to multitask here because I didn't realize that TV screen is going to be so far, and I do have some numbers that are in here that I think are important, but you don't necessarily have to see them, but I need to be able to see them to explain to you a little bit better. With that said, I'm Zach Ramirez, principal at Lakeview High School. I do want to thank President Max Parker and Dr. Detloff and the board for having us here tonight, because this has been, or actually, I should start off with, I've been at Lakeview for two years, and two years, I don't really know what normal is, so if you need some type of actual reference of normal, this may not be the person, because I know what I have done in the last two years as far as COVID is related. I do defer to a lot of people asking some of the questions, some of the numbers that you might look at. What would that look like in a normal year? Because sometimes I question when we do come up with numbers with that. So with that, we'll just kind of dive right on in. Our mission is working together to foster community of pride to grow individuals of character for lifelong success. So that means- So that means a lot, because a lot of these things, we're going to concentrate on a few things, because at the high school level, there are so many things that we could talk about as far as what we're doing, what we're accomplishing when it comes to the fine arts, when it comes to dual credit, when it comes to CTE programs. There's so much information, and when they, you know, kind of said, "Let's do a presentation with the, to the school board," it's like, "Oh, my gosh, what do you want me to present?" There's so much out there, so much positive and good things that have occurred, but at the same time, to condense that into ten, fifteen minutes, and I do want to give time to two of our students to speak as well. So looking at what we do to foster our students and making them grow every single day is the key to all of it. So with that, there are a few things that we have transformed in the front and some things that we have paid for, y'all have paid for. Just want to kind of touch on a few things. The front, we have two or three awnings in the front of the school that you're able to sit and eat. There are tables in coming. They're probably stuck on a ship somewhere in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean. They were ordered back in November. They'll be here eventually. Our students will be able to enjoy eating outside at some point. In the time being, they have found ways to just enjoy the shade and stand outside, so that's that. And then also, as you can see, there, there's some pictures of students and where they're going to college, and each one of those flags flies over their pictures as you enter the school. So you know, as we promote kids and what they're aspiring to do, we also want to make sure that we acknowledge them, because we look at decorating our facilities and individual classrooms. We also look at the school as a whole, too, to decorate and make sure that they understand that these are things that we all aspire to. So to concentrate on a few things, we do have dual credit, and I'm trying to multitask and make this thing go at the same time so I can see it. So we do have a partnership with Howard College and ASU for dual credit purposes. We did have a special partnership with ASU this year, and I kind of want to touch on just so y'all know that, how that went down. Federal government, we had forty-seven students. Texas government, we had forty-two students. In psychology, in the first semester, we had forty-three, and the second was sixteen, and those are scheduling things, and that's why that number kind of changes dramatically the second semester. Contemporary math/college algebra was twenty-nine students, and communications with thirty-five students. What makes it unique is the fact that we had four actual ASU professors come to our campus to actually do the instruction. So the Campos, Whitaker, Carrillo, and Natividad were actually, came over every single, or actually Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to teach those students college courses. So that's what's kind of unique with the ASU partnership. As you see at the bottom, though, we have one student, or students taking one course. There is eighty-seven of those. Two courses was eighty. Three courses were forty-two, and then this is where it gets, you see the number dwindling, but this is an important number, because it doesn't happen frequently. You have four students, or twelve students, taking four college-ready classes in high school, and then we actually have one student taking five dual-credit courses at Lakeview. She actually falls in the top ten. So I say that for a reason, because they're not just taking the courses and passing, then they're taking the courses and actually excelling. So kudos to that student, and kudos to all of those taking multiple courses at once. Recently, we've added a Lakeview teacher who came to us with a master's degree in chemistry, and that's Ms. Brewster. She teaches forty-two students. English three, and of these, these dual core, dual-credit classes, I'm sorry, y'all don't see it. These dual-credit courses are taught by our existing teachers, so outside of the ASU professors coming over. English three was seventy-four, English four forty-two. We have a hundred and forty-eight students in US history, with a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-two different students enrolled in dual-credit classes at Lakeview. So you look at a campus of eleven-hundred kids, that's, that's a pretty significant number, actually, taking on the endeavor of taking dual-credit courses while they're at school. Currently, we do have one math teacher who is currently working on his master's in math, and that's a hard thing to do, to find those, those teachers, because technically, when you're getting a math degree or a math master's, there are so many other job opportunities for them, to keep them in the education world is a, is a, is a task in itself. But he's very dedicated to, to Lakeview, very dedicated to the teaching profession, and he's happens to be a coach as well. So he's just a really smart guy that likes math. Okay, so here's now some CTE information, and this is kind of by the numbers. We offer around fifty-one different CTE courses at Lakeview. They range, I mean, you can, fifty-one courses is a plethora of courses, but Principles of Ag, Digital Media, Culinary Arts, those are all the different things that we could offer at Lakeview. As of right now, we've sort of ninety-nine percent completed course selection. I mean, that's a never-ending process, but they've processed one thousand one hundred twenty-nine course requests just for CTE courses. Now, do all those happen? No, I mean, there's a lot of ins and outs when it goes to a master's schedule and when, what kids can take, because sometimes they'll go and they'll take a course that's the same time as athletics, and so therefore, they can't take that course, so decisions have to be made. But I put that number on there, one thousand one hundred twenty-nine, is because those courses are very important to kids. They do request them, they do want them. They're, they're super important, because that sometimes is their smartness, and that's what's super important, to make sure that we maintain those CTE courses in our district, because they are what kids are picking. On top of that, I mean, you have your math, English, science, and social studies, those are cores, and those are super important, too, but CTE courses also real-world applicable for those students. And these are the top ten, if you're curious, as far as CTE numbers and what kids are picking. It's floral design, intro to culinary arts, principles of ag, culinary arts, which is the, another form of it, counseling and mental health, principles of health science, child development, ag, mechanics, technical dual credit, which is kind of another way of getting college credit, the technical dual credit part of it, digital interactive media, principles of construction, and culinary arts, too. So those are our top ten courses that are selected. Obviously, we have fifty, fifty courses requested, but those are just happens to be the one, the highest numbers that we have for those courses specifically. So we have certifications that they're going to actually obtain through those, some of those courses. So forty-three kids will take a knowledge-based floral design certification test, which is pretty, pretty intense, pretty cool to watch, too. Ms. Urbannick actually kind of goes through that with them and prepares them to show them a whole lot of details that I couldn't even tell you, because I don't know much about flowers, except that I can order them. And my wife said, "Don't waste your money on flowers, get something else." So, but that, the, the test behind that is pretty interesting to see kids go through it and have to put it together and then get certified after. Six students advanced to state-level culinary arts, culinary arts competition through skills. Three students will receive their Child Development Associate Certificate. This is also through the Education and Training Pathway. Four students will receive the Educational Aid One Certification, still really awesome, awesome thing that they're doing with the child development, which I believe is the first time we've done that on our campus, and I think it's expanding next year a little bit. And our agricultural program entered students in ag mechanics contest at the Stock Show rodeo last week. So this is a little bit of our graduate cohort. We have a hundred and ninety graduates at this point. That's, that's actually pretty typical. It can range between one ninety and about two twenty, depending on the graduating, graduating class coming in. I say that, we have ninety percent of those kids, which I have underlined CCMR, which is College Career Military Readiness. That's just fancy for that we've, we've done something with that student specifically, because it gets real monotonous when you break down how kids can get that point. But you can get a point basically by doing all kinds of stuff while you're in high school. So ninety percent at this point have, are going to acquire that point for, for accountability purposes, and you know, in the end, it's really making sure that students are prepared for the, for the future. Fifty-two percent of that graduating class is at-risk, so that's, that's kudos to, to the teachers, because when you're working with half of your classroom at risk, that's a, that's a difficult task. And then fifty-five percent of that social and economically, are socially and economically disadvantaged. Again, when you start your class at fifty-five percent, half of it is, you know, on a, on a little bit of a gap there that you're trying to fulfill, it makes it difficult. So kudos to those teachers, trying to make sure that they, they get everything they need for those kids and fulfilling all of that. That information is, is based off, because we do know that those numbers are probably lower than they could be, off of a free reduced lunch form, so that's a voluntary form, so trying to gather that information sometimes becomes difficult. As of right now, we have approximately sixty thousand dollars in scholarships going out to students, and it's growing every day as kids are getting accepted into different universities, and they're offering different scholarships to those kids. And then here it comes into some of our areas of focus as we look to the future. Graduation is always something that we want to make sure that we're ultimately, when we show up every single day, that's our goal, is to graduate every kid through walks of those doors. So our at-risk coordinators and all of our counselors have counselors have Jeopardy meetings with all of our seniors in the fall and in the spring. They just finished actually a third round of them, so what all that means is that they meet with every kid who has at least half a credit behind, and they talk to those parents to be sure that they're, they understand where we stand as far as graduation occurs. CCR courses and adjusted schedules, that's fancy for they're getting credit recovery built into their day at some point if they need it, and we have to finagle some of their schedules to make that work, because ultimately, we're trying to get them to become successful, and sometimes some kids need special needs or special courses and/or has to work with something in their schedule. Parent-student conferences are, those are outside of the Jeopardy meetings, they're not the official Jeopardy meeting, but they are just constantly always happening, and that includes parents, teachers, and our at-risk coordinator and counselors. PACE, as Ms. Becerra will here talk about a little bit, that's also something that, although they may leave our campus to go there, again, our ultimate goal is for a student to graduate, whether they graduate at Lakeview or they graduate at PACE, to us, that's still important. And then lunch, credit recovery, so we built that into our day, so that kids who have a schedule that is locked in, they cannot take any credit recovery, they have that opportunity during our one-hour lunch timeframe to go and do, get tutorials put in. We do know that we, we need to work on our eighth to ninth grade transition, as you heard, through a lot of our fine arts. That's happening already. They're already trying to make those connections across the board and cognizantly make ties between Lincoln and Lakeview, so that they are already kind of sucked into the system and really have already have some type of a, someone to lead the way when they get to Lakeview. Levers, I know that's a word that we may, you may or may not know, but when kids leave a school, you have to kind of find out where they end up, and that becomes a hard issue for anybody, because if they don't tell you where they end up and they don't actually dial in anywhere and it's not, doesn't hit the radar, because there's systems in the background that work that tell us if they've landed somewhere, but if they never land somewhere, we don't know where they end up, and then it ultimately becomes a dropout for us. So we're always trying to figure out where these levers end up, and that's, that's just the, it's an issue that we work through really every year. And then growing organizations as a whole. We have, I think we've talked about the ambassadors, and that's one organization that's unique, that's growing rapidly. We always know we have to get a hook for kids to want to be at school besides the four core courses, because high school is one piece of it, and that's part of the, the academics is one piece, but to make it the full student at, at the high school level, growing our organizations is always a super important thing that we do in order for, you know, kids to want to keep coming every single day. So that's, that's kind of our areas of focus. And with that, I'm going to leave you with probably the better part of my presentation. Joshua Torres and Jacob Chapa, our senior class president and our student council president, they're just going to kind of give a synopsis of some things that they prepared before they came up here.
Good evening. To start off, we would like to thank President Max Parker, Dr. Detloff, and the Board of Trustees for having us today. I am Jacob Chapa, and this is Joshua Torres, seniors at Lakeview High School. I am the student council president, and he is the senior class president. We would like to take a few minutes to share with all of you some projects that have taken place this year at Lakeview High School.
Lakeview has recently participated in a color run at Holloman Elementary and is now going to hold one of their own. Community service events have included ma, making and donating blankets to the Kansas Center at Shannon Hospital, Easter baskets to a nursing home. We also, we also sent the Easter bunny to a voice culture for a visit. Students are mentoring students at our elementary school. We have students volunteering at daycares, and also, we have recently teamed up with one of the headstarts. Our ROTC and Spanish Club have joined together to host two blood drives this year to help out our local blood bank. Our floral design class has kept students involved with donating arrangements to nursing homes and a local preschool academy. Our culinary classes have volunteered at numerous benefits throughout this, throughout the year, along with Spanish Club, also being involved with Lower Bush Foundation. One of our own teachers put on a demonstration how to make Ukrainian Easter eggs, and our dance team participated in a kick event donating the proceeds to Ukraine.
This year, we held homecoming events and already planning next years. Our student council helped host a food drive in November, and a second food drive is taking place this month through choir. Student council presented friendship gifts to all opposing teams during football games and helped host the hospitality room during basketball tournaments and games. Student council members also jumped in and helped with the district-level skills competition this year, when the culinary section was helped at Lakeview. They were in charge of the hospitality room for that day and where the delivery service for the schools that needed lunches picked up and dropped off.
Trash pickups throughout the year were hosted by NHS, student council, and Spanish Club. The final trash pick of the year was helped on National Trash Day in April. Students have also given up their lunch hours to pick up trash around campus in order to beautify our area. Blood drives have been, have helped been by ROTC and Spanish Club. Student council has always collected needed items and donated them to our local councils, Mills on Wheels, and to our local church that restores the neighborhood food boxes. Activities throughout the year have also included toy drives, Secret Santa, pennies for patients, dance camps, parades, volunteering at sports events, and festivals.
All organizations have stayed busy throughout the year, and community involvement has had a huge impact on all involved. We bleed blue on the North Side, and we want to ensure that our school and the community realizes how important everyone is for all of us to experience success. Thank you.
My apologies. Does anybody have any questions?
Board team?
I have a question. I was just curious, first of all, thank you so much for all the, letting us know all the great things that are happening at Lakeview. It's always great to hear what's happening in our schools. I was just curious to know with an at-risk group of students at fifty-two percent and fifty-five percent socioeconomic, what's your graduation percentage rate, do you know, off the top of your head?
But in a typical year, this is one of those things, I had to kind of go back several years to find out where that actually fell. Typically, we're around a ninety-four percent graduation rate. Since COVID, it's kind of hovered around eighty-eight percent. And so we have made small goals to get back to that ninety-four percent. Part of that is a lever problem. We don't know where a lot of kids went during COVID, and because they never landed anywhere, those are kids that we're, we're never going to get credit for.
Mr. Ramirez, I've asked every principal that's been here, so I gotta keep asking. As a board, is there anything that you're missing over there at Lakeview that we can help you with, that, you know, from a either funding or support standpoint that you're not getting?
Really, at this point, we, our goal is getting those kids in the building, and that's kind of been an attendance thing that we've been working through. And so we have what we need, we're just really trying to now work with what we have to get everybody there.
I don't know if anyone else has any comments. I'm looking, but I do appreciate you being here and appreciate you bringing your president and your student council president also. It's always good to meet those persons. Sometimes we don't see them, but just a few minutes at graduation, so thank you for bringing those over, too. Yeah, come on by, shake your hand.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Claudia Becerra, and I am the principal of Carver Learning Center and the coordinator of PACE. And I'm really excited, if you've been to any of my graduations at PACE at all, I'm really excited to talk about my kids today and about our programs, and I'm very passionate about working with at-risk students. So I'm going to share a little bit of information with you guys. First, I want to start off with the dream team here. This is my Carver Learning staff. I have been at Carver, this is my third year, and when I began at Carver, we did a data dive, looking at our student enrollment, looking at the type of students we were serving, grade levels, the demographics, to identify what students we were serving the most at DAAP. DAAP, as you know, is, or may not know, is the disciplinary alternative educational placement that serves our students in SA ISD. This group of people came together and we rewrote our vision and our mission statement, and you can see a photograph- And you can see a photograph there of where we have it on our wall in our in one of our central locations in our building. Our vision is to help students recognize that the future is dictated by their choices, not their past. And our mission is to enhance the future of our students by promoting citizenship, inspiring personal growth and encouraging perseverance along their academic path. This vision and mission statement was written by our staff. They worked very hard at it and were invested in what they wrote. And so it is a reminder for us as a staff of what we're there to do with our kids. Some enrollment information, much like Mr. Ramirez stated, I had to go back prior. That's why you see a gap there in the dates. I had to go back because it was it wasn't really right to compare 2019, right after we didn't come back from spring break when COVID hit. So I had to go back so that you could get a good, just kind of an average of where our kids are at our enrollment for DAP students. In 2018, our cumulative enrollment for the year was 292 students. This year up until today, we're at 283. That's actually good because it shows that we're kind of in the same place. We haven't gone up. I mean, we would like to see that go down, obviously, but right now it hasn't increased and we're glad to have students back in school. Some of our campus goals that we wrote, our main focus right now is student engagement. We do this through PLCs at Carver. It's a lot harder because we don't have a department of science or a department of math. And so we get really creative with the way our teachers PLC together. They've done a wonderful job of doing this. They are all trained in design qualities and try very hard to design engaging lessons for our students. As you guys know, students that come to Carver sometimes are not very motivated to be involved in their education. You know, and they've seen difficulty and challenges and being successful in traditional school. So for our teachers especially, it's really important for them to design engaging lessons for our students so that they are more invested in their education. We also have a goal of making sure we transition our students back to their home campus successfully. We do this by using transition plans. Transition plans are a plan that we put together with my behavior coordinator and the assistant principal at the home campus, the that placed a student at Carver. And together we come up with strategies that worked with specific students. We have conversations about students and worked at our campus and what possibly work at theirs. We pass this information on back to the home campus in an attempt to have sort of a wrap around for students when they return to their campus. They it sets them up for their best chance of being successful back at their home campus. We also have a focus on supporting students' social and emotional learning needs. And we've done this through, there's a couple of initiatives I know that are underway. We have one drug court that is is something that is, we have a lot of students that come to Carver for controlled substance infractions. And so that's something that we're hoping will mitigate some of those placements. And also our community nights that we did in conjunction with the high schools where information was shared with parents as far as like the dangers of underage drinking and vaping and things of that nature to kind of help educate our parents to help them understand how they can best support us at home for the students that we're receiving at Carver. I wanted to share with you guys something that I'm really proud of. One of the things that we've been focusing on the past three years that I've been there at Carver is making Carver feel like not the scary place that people hear about. A lot of times when I run into people that have never been to our campus, they they they're like, oh, you work there. But Carver and invite everybody to come. It's a wonderful place. We have all these great learning spaces. This one on the far left used to be an unoccupied cafeteria area. Our students do not eat all together in a cafeteria. And so we had this large space that wasn't being really used for anything. And our wonderful maintenance department, as part of a kind of a mini makeover that we received last year, helped us create this learning space. And this is a multifunctional room. We use it for small student groups. We use it for staff training. We use it just for all sorts of things. And so we couldn't come up with a better name. We call it the Blue Room. But we're very proud of that. Our design qualities are on the wall. This is where our teachers PLC together. And then on the top right, our students do, you know, a lot of the engagement at Carver allows our students to build and create things as part of our learner profile. And so when they're learning new concepts, we have them make models of the things that they're learning. And so I think up in the top right corner, there's a lion eating a zebra to show predation and there's an alligator with a bird in its mouth and it's I think it's called mutualism is the concept that they were learning. But it's really fun to see our kids doing that because a lot of times these these are same kids that aren't engaged on their home campus because they've just kind of been frustrated and they're not used to being successful. So when I see cool things like this in my classroom, I like to take photographs of it. The bottom right is what a typical classroom looks like at Carver. We have computer stations usually lining our walls and then we have our desks and I just a lot of people don't know what it looks like. So I just wanted to kind of demystify Carver. It's it's a place where we hope students love to learn. A lot of times our students are more successful there because of the smaller environment. There's fewer students. Our teachers lead with their hearts and they understand that building relationships is a very, very important piece of reaching students who who struggle. There's another learning space. This past year, we started replacing our whiteboards with the large monitors that are pretty much in our district. Most classrooms are now moving to the the large monitors instead of the whiteboards. This allowed my teachers to start doing some really cool things with technology as well. As far as our transition plans are concerned, the goal is to provide the home campus with useful information about the student, strategies that have worked or that can be implemented on the home campus so that students have the best chance at being successful. And then I want to talk about PAYS. This will be, I guess, my seventh year at PAYS. I think sixth or seventh year at PAYS. And at PAYS, we are, we we feel like we're redefining alternative. We see ourselves as an extension of our existing high schools. When parents call us and say, well, how do I get my student to PAYS? We explain to them that our program supports our local high schools, Lakeview and Central High School. And so we have such close relationships with the home campus staff, with Mr. Ramirez and Mr. Waters and their at-risk coordinators that we often talk about the same kids all the time. Our program provides an alternative pathway to graduation. Our students come from all walks of life. We understand that most of our students are coming to us under extenuating circumstances. So we are laser focused on helping them graduate. I also like to talk about PAYS because many times people think in the past, even when I've run into people like at the grocery store, people will say, oh, well, I thought PAYS is where like maybe our teen moms go. And it's no longer that anymore. We serve students that are working full time to support families. We serve students that are the 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 income, main income of their homes. They're supporting family members that are paying medical bills or grandparents that can't work. We have gotten an increasingly amount of students that simply don't do well in traditional settings because of anxiety. And I think it kind of goes back to that kiddo that talked about social media and you know what I mean, just being around a lot of kids. And so a lot of our kids just don't do well in a very large with a lot of a large student population. So we see, we have seen a lot more students come to us for those reasons. Students that have struggled with attendance and again, usually for the same reasons because they're trying to work full time. So they're getting off at 12, 1 o'clock in the morning from Whataburger and then they're trying to get up to go to school the next day. So we have a lot of students that that come to us for those reasons. But our students go on to do amazing things. We have lots of students that go on into the military. Students, we have students, I know we have one that writes back to us regularly that's at Texas State right now. Just lots of really good stories coming from our students at PAYS. This is my team at PAYS and I didn't want to end the night without giving all the credit to them because day in and day out, they're the ones that work hands on with our students at PAYS and and make sure that they don't lose the motivation to get to that finish line because by the time they get to us, they're so, so close. Here's some enrollment data for PAYS. Oh, I can't see that. I'll just move it this way. Okay, so our enrollment, it hovers around 107, 118. Now, this is kind of a rolling number because our students come to us, complete their credits and then they don't stay as part of our enrollment. So this is kind of the high point because our kids kind of cycle in and out of the PAYS program. So for 21, 22, our numbers are going back up. You'll see that they're at 118. Our graduation rates always hover about at around 100 students. And it went down a little bit in 2020 and 2021, we were down to 90, but this year we're projected to graduate 116. So that'll be really good. And then our overall graduates since 2008 is 1,167. And I like to think of those 1,167 students that might not have graduated otherwise. So we're really proud of that number. This is just a cordial invitation to to the board. Our PAYS graduation this year is on May 26 at the McNeese Convention Center at 6:00 PM. It's one of my favorite events of the year. So I just wanted to make sure I noted that for you. And then this is a photograph of one of our graduating classes. I just want to mention that one of the things we're really proud of, again, when I get parent phone calls inquiring about our program or concerned parents that want that want an alternative path for their students, but they hesitate because they they want to know what their diploma is going to say or if they're no longer going to be Lakeview students or, you know, students that have struggled that consider themselves chiefs or, you know, it's hard because you want you want to be able to wear your cap and gown. And so one of the things I'm really proud of in our about our program, which, by the way, I went to a conference, I think it was about two years ago in Austin with a whole bunch of other DAEPs and alternative schools, and this was not the case for most of them. They they are considered separate campuses. And in our district, one of the things that I'm really proud about is that our students can get to wear their cap and gown. So you'll see in this photograph that our central students are wearing their their central regalia and the Lakeview students are wearing their cap and gown. And so that's something that's really that they really love about being able to come to our program. Here are some of the learning student, learning spaces at PAYS and I wanted to brag about these because one of the things that I've said, if, you know, I'll talk about my programs all day long. But one of the things that I'm really proud of is that, again, a lot of our students that need an alternative path have struggled with attendance. So PAYS is not a punitive placement. Students come to us through application and we identify students that have an extenuating circumstance to come to us. So they they're not in trouble. I wanted PAYS, I kept thinking about how you see the college students that are always studying at Starbucks and you see kids that will go there and open up their laptop and they'll be there for hours, right? Sometimes they're not even drinking coffee. And I thought, I want this to be a place where they want to come learn. And so with the support of of all of our administrators here, central administrators, I was able to get some, I don't know if you can see them in this far left picture, there's a couple of like the tall barista, the bistro tables. So the taller bistro tables and you can see kids back there on their computers working at the taller bistro tables. And it's just one of those things where it's kind of neat. It's a space they want to be in. And then the student that's on that that flexible seating right there, that kind of like a little mini couch in the back. And again, he's on his computer getting lots of work done. And again, this is a space they want to be. Our students at PAYS sometimes have to go through remediation classes to complete their end of course testing. And so the two pictures in the center are students that are going through those remediation courses. So one of them is doing a lab. I think it was for chemistry. And then the student above is actually teaching the students a concept. I don't remember which class it was, but just, you know, lots of lots of learning happening at PAYS. And then the far right picture is a student that was recording a testimonial for one of the graduations. And that is actually what I what I wanted to share with you guys to conclude my segment is a short testimonial from a student that graduated not last year, but I think it was during COVID. And I love to hear him talk about his experience at PAYS.
Hi, my name is Jonas York and I am a graduating senior with PAYS. And I first off wanted to thank PAYS for allowing me to graduate on time and not feeling rushed into it. And if I hadn't joined PAYS, I don't think I would have been where I am today. With the teachers 24/7 allowed to help, I felt like I was never alone and everything wasn't hard. It felt like I had someone there along the way if I ever needed anything. All my teachers are very nice. I've got one of them standing over here. They've all helped me immensely and they were all so kind and nice and always there to help. What it means to me to graduate is to succeed in a chapter of my life that was so hard and overcoming such a such a task and achieving such a high goal. And not only that, but also moving towards my future career and pursuing my career in music fully. Hi, my name is Jonas York and I am a graduating senior with PAYS. And I first off wanted to thank-
Okay, that was one of our former graduates a couple of years ago and it's something that I'm really proud of. Most of the students that talk about PAYS will share stories like that where they feel accepted, they feel supported. And it's really important to us, both at Carver and at PAYS for students to feel supported because a lot of times they haven't, they haven't, they don't know what success feels like. And so it's important for us to let them to help them feel that, especially the kiddos that are transitioning back to the home campus. And I think I have one more slide. Thank you. And do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Becerra. Any any questions? Board team?
So one, thank you for being here, Mr. Ramirez. I meant to tell you thank you as well, sorry. And also thank you for what you do at PAYS and Carver. Both those campuses are important to our district and thank you for that. Wish lists, though, for anything that you need for either your campuses, just make sure you let us know because we, even without Shelley here, we still love PAYS. And so we want to make sure and Carver, but we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help those kids succeed.
I I appreciate that. Shelley was a huge advocate for us. I still feel very much supported by our district. So thank you for everything that you guys do for both of both of the programs. Now, Mr. Waters.
I'd like to kick off the Central High School portion of the presentation by introducing you to two young ladies who are going to talk to you about points of pride at CHS. I have Karina Perez, our senior class president, and I have Mariah Mayville, our student council president.
Good evening. At Central, we have had one of the best years so far, from homecoming to district champions to, well, what I would say the best part about this year is us finally being able to graduate. Class of 2022 is very lucky because we are the first class since COVID-19 has hit to have had a somewhat normal year. We are here today to give you a timeline of one of our best highlights throughout the year, starting off with our annual welcome week, our which is inspired by our principal who always encourages us to find our one thing at Central that we can connect with to call our home. This week, we had dress up weeks, organizational fairs to display what we have to offer at Central, followed by our first Orange Out home game where we handed out cheese balls to get students in the spirit. Then in September, we had our annual homecoming week filled with dress up days, activities. And this year, we got to have our parade and pep rally at the San Angelo Stadium, which, by the way, was a huge success. Not only did we get to fit more students, but more of our community so that they can see what Central is all about. And that is Bobcat Pride. Our theme this year was Bobcats Assemble, giving students the fun superhero theme, but also recognizing our real life superheroes who without, we wouldn't have been able to face COVID-19. Next, we form new clubs like the bilingual tutoring club, writing club, or even our Dungeons and Dragons Club and so much more. In our sports, we had a senior, Cody Fintris, who was the only one to qualify for state in swimming. And we're taking both boys and girls gymnastics to state. And in boys track, we are, we took first place in this past district tournament, which hasn't happened in the past 26 years. Moving on, our student council organized a Dude Be Nice Day that landed on National Kindness Day where we handed out free Dude Be Nice t-shirts. And come on, who doesn't like free things? Encouraging them to choose kindness in all that they do. To finish up the first semester, our speech and debate team took first place in having the most qualified state points in all of TFA. And we are currently taking 21 students to Nationals, which will be in Lewisville, Kentucky this summer.
To start off the second semester, our student council raised $600 for Meals for the Elderly. In the musical realm, we have our choir taking 23 students to state, 39 who are going in band and eight students from orchestra. Elijah Jackson and Dirt Ross were the two students to go to all state and choir. Lauren Ochoa went for band and we had one go for orchestra. Greg Fault took first in the orchestra regionals as well. In Deco, we are sending eight students to Nationals, which will be held in Maine. For FFA, Applied Agriculture took first in area and 17th and state. We have accomplished so much this school year and to finish the year off, we have our the senior picnic, senior volleyball tournament this Thursday and a purple up day to honor and show that our support for the military students we have at Central. We have prom, the top 10% banquet, several award ceremonies. But last, but last, sorry, last but not least, graduation. We are so thankful for all the memories and life lessons we've learned. We are so thankful for all the memories and life lessons we've learned during our time at Central. We couldn't have done it without the support and help of our incredible teachers, staff members, family members, and more importantly, SAISD. So thank you, and sick 'em, cats.
Instead of waiting for me.
No, you're not going to be talking that long, Mr. Waters.
Good evening, school board and central office staff. Warren, Mariah, and Karina outstanding. That's why they're the president of both organizations. I want to thank Zach and Claudia for their presentation as well. They did a bang-up job. Mariah and Karina are two outstanding students that are definitely ambassadors of our school, sharing with you tonight many examples of our motto, "Central Can." We have had many things celebrate this year, and many more celebrations to come in the next six weeks. I truly appreciate you giving two of our student leaders an opportunity to visit with you tonight. I went back and forth as I thought about my presentation tonight. I was given direction to focus on points of pride. It was shared with me that the board wanted data shared regarding our school year. It was shared that I should create a slideshow that would go along with my presentation. All of this was doable and actually easy, yet it was not what I really thought should be shared, and I continued to think about doing something else. I've been a teacher, an assistant principal, a campus principal for SAISD for 32 years. This district is the only district I have ever worked for. Between my wife, Jody, my kids Jordan and Wyatt, and I, the Waters family have experienced three elementaries, all four junior highs and middle schools, I was at Edison, and both high schools. I have poured my whole entire career up to this point into SAISD. Because of this experience, I have been given respect for my seniority. I don't take that respect lightly. Because of my seniority, and I hope, proven ability, quite often, my voice has been heard and my thoughts listened to. It is because of this respect for my years with the district, having been through the ups and downs of SAISD, and most recently importantly, the last two-plus years of the pandemic, that I am taking some liberties with my presentation tonight. I will not share points of pride. Mariah and Karina did that for me and did a great job. I have no data to share, nor slides to go along with my words. Making this decision to use this opportunity to speak openly to the board and all key figures of central office was not taken lightly. My respect for each of you and each of your positions should by now be understood. In preparing for tonight, I kept coming back to the fact that if I didn't say what has been on my mind formulated over the last two years, I would regret it. Tonight is something I felt I had to do. I shared with my staff that I, until recently, viewed my career as two phases, teaching and administrative years. But that has changed. I now view my career as pre-COVID and post-COVID. I call this year not my 32nd year, but year two. Year one of COVID, we were reactionary. We had to be. We were in uncharted territory and needed to survive and do the things to carry on. We made on-the-spot decisions and did the best we could and made it through. Year two brought hope that we could do what we used to do, the way we used to do it, and we believe that we could return to normal. I believe that school will never be like it was prior to March of 2020. It has changed, and we have to make changes with it. This year, we have learned that many students struggle just to be students. We have seen an increase in mischief behavior and a decrease in grade level maturity. Isolation, virtual instruction, and family strife have all contributed to added challenges that are on the plates of all of our schools. There is an increase in the number of students dealing with mental health issues. Unfortunately, we only know the tip of that iceberg, since all I can talk about are those that are willing to share what they are going through. In a recent RAN survey, schools and school districts stated that addressing mental health needs of both students and staff ranked higher than student engagement, student attendance, and declining enrollment. The learning gaps that have been created since March of 2020 have been a challenge to overcome as we continue to run schools the same way without addressing a way to meet those needs. Higher failure rates, lower test scores, and a decrease in participation and performance in advanced academics are concerns that affect graduation rates, dropout rates, and the college-bound student. Real and meaningful solutions to these realities are hard to come by in our current status. The retention of teachers and the recruiting of teachers is an ever-growing concern. In the last several years, as we have looked to tackle district challenges, the demands on the teacher have drastically increased. We cannot continue to ask that it needs to be done outside the workday. The day-to-day demands on teachers to meet, prepare, design, engage, contact, and serve has reached a breaking point. Teachers are struggling to get things accomplished at all levels, yet we continue to expect it. As it is true with students, it is true with teachers and staff. Mental health issues are an issue for school staff. I have spent many hours this year, much more than ever before, talking to my staff about their personal and job-related issues and a struggle to find the balance. For the first time in my career, I had teachers quit in the middle of a year because they thought they had a better opportunity elsewhere that they felt would be better for their health and well-being. Other staff are leaving the profession to retirement or a better opportunity. Attendance rates of staff are affected, and we see teachers taking more days to get what they call a break from the day-to-day. I have begun to have conversations with prospective teachers and staff over the last week or so. Some, and I anticipate more, have asked questions regarding our school calendar, district pay raises, and incentive pay, because school districts are announcing almost weekly changes in their districts that are ways to entice and recruit. The cost of living in San Angelo, which was a recruiting tool, is no longer that. With the increase in the housing market, the strain on gas, food, and daycare, we have to create other selling points to recruit prospective staff. Public opinion and support for our school district and staff has taken a hit with issues attacked by state and national politics and special interest groups. At the height of the pandemic, teachers were placed on a pedestal. No one wanted to teach their own kids, and the value of what we do was at an all-time high. I believe we have a ton of support in the community of San Angelo, but unfortunately, and quite often, we only hear the negative. It is sad that a teacher has to keep a positive folder where they place cards and emails to remind them that there are those out there that think they do a great job. They do this because when the negative comes these days, it can be more harsh and disrespectful than ever before. We need to create connections in our community to celebrate our schools and our school district and our employees to create a larger sense of appreciation. I was taught many years ago that if you're going to point out issues of concern, it's a good idea to also bring possible solutions. Let me recap what I've stated so far. I believe that we need to address the following areas: time, pay and compensation, mental health of both staff and students, and a community connection. Time. Time has to be addressed next year. Every year, staff asks for more time to get it all done. We need to address this in our school calendar. This is more critical than ever. Schools need time to meet, plan, design, and prepare. We need time to make the calls and have the meetings. We need an opportunity to create remedial plans for kids to address gaps, state testing needs, and student failure. The time has to be given in the form of a staff-only, no-kids day, or early-release days built into our calendar. Other school districts have gone to four-day weeks. This plan does require a change in bell schedule and potentially a longer school year, but the benefits, I believe, outweigh any negative. Pay. We need to be competitive with other districts as well, as best we can. We need to make decisions now on a pay raise for next year and include compensation for remaining an employee. Other districts have already announced pay raises and compensation plans for next school year. A district that we struggled to compete with their pay because of the oil field just announced a pay increase for both current and new staff for next year. I have lost teachers to that district and have one or two prospective staff right now deciding between us and them. In addition, we have to pay staff for the extra. Asking staff to do the extra is hard to do these days with all the challenges that they face and their families face. We need to recognize that they are giving of their time and create additional stipends to do this. A concern expressed by existing staff and prospective staff is childcare. Is there a way to create childcare options for our staff by looking at existing sites or creating a site? Mental health. What are we doing to address the mental health needs of our students? Our counselors already have a full load, and the increased needs of our kids cannot be added to our counselors. We have to look at what is being done elsewhere and create something here. We need awareness, information, and then we need onsite support for our kids. What are we doing to address the mental health of our staff and teachers? Can we add any support in our health benefits that allow a certain number of visits to an outside counselor? Or can we add something that significantly reduces that cost? Our staff needs support. Community connection. We need to work on a stronger community connection that provides for staff. We do things for new staff at the beginning of the year, but what about all year? Discounts at restaurants, gyms, and other businesses. Businesses hosting staff and district appreciation events periodically throughout the year, and letting schools and staff know how they are appreciated by asking local businesses to encourage their employees to reach out and thank a teacher. We need the positive majority that supports schools to stand up and be heard. To conclude, on my way home yesterday from Shreveport, Louisiana, in a six-and-a-half-hour drive where my newlywed daughter and her husband moved to, I continue to think about this moment right now. Along the drive, I always listen to the radio, and the song "The Best of Times" by Styx was played. The title resonated with me, because the truth is that we, schools, teachers, staff, and administrators, will continue to produce the best of times, even in the worst of times, as we did the last two years as we navigated the unknown water of the pandemic. We will continue to break our backs to help kids, will spend our own money to help them achieve, will continue to devote time and effort to make it happen, because we want our kids to excel and shine at what we believe are great schools. But should we continue to do this, and will our staff continue to do this? There is no other profession that has these expectations without the support in the form of time, benefits, and compensation. As the times continue to change, young people are not flocking to be a teacher, and current teachers are looking at other options, including not being a teacher. How much longer can we operate at a high level with a pre-COVID mindset? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, and thank you. I don't disagree with anything you said. We have been concerned about many of the things that you've been saying. It's not just in San Angelo. I know you're speaking about your teachers that you know of and that you see every day, and we know it's a national crisis that we're about to have, and I know that there's not enough people hearing it, and I appreciate your voice, so maybe people in the community will hear more about it. I've read some of the things some of the special interest groups have said about teachers, and it makes me ill to say that a teacher, if they weren't a teacher, they would not be able to get a job, that teachers are nothing but glorified babysitters. And I have a daughter who's a teacher, and I know how stressful it is, and it's, we've got to get this word out, and it starts with us. And we, as a board, are looking at many of the things that you're discussing, that you've talked. I certainly understand the stress the teachers are on. On the one hand, they're criticized for what we just said, glorified babysitters. On the other hand, you have, during the COVID, people were screaming, "We've got to get our kids back to school." And then they're criticized because the teachers aren't giving them everything they need. And the teachers, virtual teaching, they're not good enough. And then others are saying, "We don't want them to go to school, we want them to only have virtual." So the teachers have to prepare lessons, plans for virtual and for being in class, and never get a pat on the back. So I also understand the mental health crisis. You and I have talked about that, and I'm very concerned about our students, but I'm very concerned about our teachers. And it's another one of those things that doesn't have necessarily an easy solution when you're talking about mental stress, when you're trying to do your very best and you don't have enough time, you're not enough pay. And as I've told the new teachers, you do all of that at school, and you still got to go home, and you've got to cook meals, and you've got to take care of your family that's there. And some days, or maybe a lot of days, it's like, it's not worth it. And that's what I think we're having with some of the teachers that we have now that are saying, "I'm going to give this up." And we've got others that are not going into the profession because they're not hearing enough positive things about it. A teacher is, in my opinion, as I've said many times, where our country is very much out of whack when somebody like me, who's an attorney, makes much more than somebody who's a teacher, because in the big scheme of things, a teacher is much more important to the future of our country than an attorney is. But that's the way it is, and that's the way it's been for many years, and some of these things have got to change, and we've got to have more people recognizing our teachers, because without our teachers, our future's going to go right down the drain, because our kids are not going to be able to get the education that they deserve. So with that, I didn't mean to dominate the conversation here, so other board members-
Max, I know you didn't have a question there, but one of the things that I want to point out is that time is of the essence. We talk a lot about recognizing that things exist, but we have to start putting those communications into action, and it needs to start now, going into next school year. There are things that cannot wait, or we will continue to fall behind and lose that opportunity that we have right now.
We're already behind.
Right, so let's catch up.
We're already behind, because, and we'll do our best to catch up, but what I'm getting at about being behind, that not wanting to be a Negative Nellie, is that we're already going to have people leaving, and we don't have people to replace them. And that's been my concern, and I've been on the soapbox about that. And we just went to a conference last week at ASU, and they're not having near enough graduates, or won't have near enough graduates, and neither are the other schools graduating young teachers, and this is something that I'm maybe meet with you privately sometime, because I don't know what some of the solutions are going to be. Even if we meet everything that you're wanting here, it's not going to be enough, in my opinion, and that's where I'm concerned, of what are we going to do when there's not enough teachers, and there's not going to be enough teachers nationwide for, you know, the foreseeable future right now? the foreseeable future right now. So.
We have to be competitive against others that are making some of these decisions now. We're competing against school districts that have four-day weeks. We're competing with signing bonuses. We're competing with schools that are offering childcare. We're doing a ton of things in other districts that are turning teachers towards them and not us.
We're competing against Walmart that's paying $100,000 for bus drivers. Okay? We've got a lot of things we're competing against.
Good point. Sorry, Max and I will let somebody else talk.
As I was going to say.
We could go on for days, Max, you and I can.
Any other board member want to have a part of this?
Taylor, I think I may have answered your question.
I got your wish list. We're going to work on it.
Thank you very much.
But thank you.
I appreciate that.
I have a question for you, Mr. Waters. So, in listening to you talk about all the different opportunities for our community to help with some of these issues, it makes me think about community-based accountability and all the work that we've done with that, with Dr. Ritter and our other admin team. And so I was wondering where we are with that, if there's anything there that can help us with the community.
We were really digging in and on the right track right prior to COVID. COVID kind of put us behind the curve, and we've got to pick it back up and roll it. We haven't done that lately. We haven't done that yet, but I hear good things about what could possibly happen. But we've got to engage in that. We've got to have that support, and we've got to have that leadership to take community-based accountability forward.
Mr. Parker, I'll just conclude. I just want to thank Mr. Waters for his passion and commitment to SAISD for so many years and his attention to detail and focus on our kids, and it makes us all better. So, thank you, Bill, for sharing your celebrations and challenges, and we'll continue to work towards student benefit and to ensure that we retain our great staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, all the principals that you came here and for your presentations and for all you do for our students across our district. All right, are we ready to go onboard to finish the agenda? Does anybody need to take a quick break?
Yeah, let's just keep going.
All right, here we go. All right, we have, this is, I'm on the next agenda item with Dr. Detloff, and that's our annual required hours of continuing education for school board. And so let me go through that quickly. For the folks that are watching, the school, under the education code, we're required to get continuing education as, and training as board members. And we have all exceeded those hours, but I will go over the number of hours that we've, each one of the board members has. Lupita Arroyo is our new board member, and she has 22.75 total hours this year. Bill Dendel has 22.25. Mr. Gallegos has 24.25. Taylor Kingman has 21.25. Lanny Lehman has 22.25. I have 22.25. And our professional student, Amy Mizell Flint, has 69.5 hours. So, she is, gets, gets the prize. So, I appreciate all that Amy does, volunteers, and goes to many of the programs that some of us can't go and some of us that she makes time to go to. And I appreciate you, Amy, for all you do. But I appreciate all the board team of getting their hours in and for our admin team pointing out different places that we can get our hours or scheduling, training for us as a group where we get to also use our board team to get training. So, we have our, everyone has their hours. Okay, now we'll go to our consent items. We have consent items A through F. Consent item A is consider donations. These are items that we discussed last week. B, consider acceptance of audit engagement letter from our CPAs and business advisors. C, consider cooperative purchasing organizations. D, consider bid number 20-01 for curriculum and instructional materials. E is a little different than what we discussed last week. This is a consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for the school year 2021, 2022. That's this particular year we've hired someone. I think we got notice of it this week that'll be coming in to finish the school year this year. And then we have superintendent's recommendations for 2022 and 2023 teacher and other professional contracts for next year. So, do I hear a motion to approve our consent items A through F?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Dendel has made the motion, is seconded by Dr. Kingman, to approve this, the consent items. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment on this item? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Consider bill's accounts and financial statements for March 2022, as Dr. McFarland discussed with us at our pre-agenda meeting. They're motion to approve.
Just as a quick reminder, all of our bill's accounts, including our checkbook, are available online under Financial Transparency on the district website. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Kingman and seconded by Mr. Dendel to approve agenda item nine, consider bill's accounts and financial statements. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. And item 10, consider bid number 22-005, interactive technology curriculum. Mr. Henry.
Thank y'all for having me here tonight. Tonight, I bring to you bid number 22-005, interactive technology curriculum. During the planning phase for STEM camp, the digital innovation team wanted to add an additional technology resource that could be implemented during this summer camp and used throughout the school year. For the past two years, they have reviewed and tested different options. They wanted something that would be portable, interactive, suitable for all ages, and add a physical piece as well. An RFQ was sent to buyboard vendors who offered interactive technology that fit this description. We received two quality submissions and one no bid for this project. The quotes were reviewed by the purchasing and the digital innovation team. Procomputing's Lu system was not only the lowest price but provided lessons for all areas desired. This piece of equipment will not only project lessons onto the wall but also turns the wall into an interactive touchscreen. Activities produced by Lu include, but is not limited, PE, math, science, and STEM. At this time, I'm going to bring Brandon Legon, a member of the digital innovation team up here. He's the expert on this equipment, and I'll let him go over it with you.
I wouldn't go as far as say an expert on this Lu system. I actually got the opportunity to play with one of these guys, and that's what I mean when I'm not an expert because some of the instructions were not quite explained to me as I started playing. So, when bunnies were jumping up and I was supposed to be greater than and less than, I might not have been as good as I would have been with a little preparation and things. But what I did experience was the potential that this could have with our students. I think that something like this, it's projected on the wall, and there's so many different, it hits every piece of curriculum from math, science. There's even a social-emotional piece to it where students are able to interact with this, whatever is projected. And it just addresses so many different things that we really felt like Jennifer and I both, when we experienced this, we were like, "Our campus needs this." And if you've ever been in an elementary gym, you imagine this projected on the wall. There's so much that it can do and address so many students at one time, which is really big because when you're in these big locations and a lot of things is happening, you know, you want to be able to have as many kids engaged at one time, and this does that. There are games that have 99 people can participate at a time. There are yoga activities where the students can be right there and participate in yoga. There are activities where you are throwing balls and hitting targets that are math-related, science-related. Teachers can go in and customize the activities to address the curriculum that they're teaching in the classroom, which is huge. And one thing that really stuck with me is the ability to, we're always encouraging our special areas teachers to always work with the classroom teachers. What are you teaching in your classroom? How can, what you're, how can I reiterate what you're teaching in my classroom? And this is a way to do that. And I think that it's really a way for students to get a whole lot of curriculum in an interactive, energetic type of setting, and I really feel like it would be something that our students would benefit from. And we could have one here, actually. It would be great for school board meeting breaks if you needed to just kind of go and get your arm workout real quick and just kind of help you with that. I definitely would recommend that as well. But we definitely saw a lot of potential in that, even moving forward into our middle schools as well. They're great. They work for school dances and activities and things, and just the possibilities are so endless that there is something in here we could use it for, probably. I don't know for sure. But I definitely think that the Lu is something that should be entertained as something that our students can use. Any questions?
We've got the right man for the job.
It was fun, guys. Like I said, I had a little moment when I was, I was trying, and it was, there was a puzzle piece that they put, and you see the puzzle piece, the puzzle all together, and then you have to throw the pieces and rotate them to fit and make the puzzle piece all, put it all together. It was a struggle. Puzzles, I'm not really good with puzzles just in front of me, so having to throw a target, it was a whole lot of things and skills. Taylor, I know what you're thinking. I know what you're thinking. Don't say it out loud, okay? Taylor was giving me a hard time at the soccer fields this weekend, so I know what he's thinking. So, you can't ask any questions, but anybody else can.
I may have, I may have missed this somewhere, but did we know how many were buying of these boards?
Oh, right now, just one. Just one, and we would like to just rotate it through our, we'll start at our STEM camp and then develop some kind of system where it rotates through our elementary gyms for the, throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
At the cost of using the administrator's recommendation for Procomputing's purchase of Lu interactive technology is $31,100, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's what you're recommending?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Unless I have to pay for it, and then, no, sir, I am not. I'm just playing.
Well, I'll make the motion that we consider bid number 22.005, interactive technology curriculum is outlined by Mr. Legon and by Jason for the purchase of Procomputing's Lu interactive technology. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion? Any public comment? I'll call it for a vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, that completes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. That completes our agenda for tonight. We need to go into closed session. Dr. Detloff says very quickly, under Texas open, Texas government code 551.072, real property and 551.074, personnel matters. All right, we've returned from executive session. We took no votes. We took no action. And with that said, we'll adjourn our meeting.